Counselor Belts.
Here.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
He's showing no audio at the moment.
We'll pretend he's here, I guess.
We'll see when he is able to speak. There he is.
Are you here, Counselor Lopez?
I'm here just having some trouble with my tech tonight. One moment.
Counselor McKeel.
Here.
Counselor Oberst.
Yes, I'm.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Here.
Mayor Coons.
I am here as well. And Counselor Belts, will you lead us in the flag salute tonight if everybody else wants to mute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There's the flag. There's the flag. Thank you.
There it is. Thank you very much. Tonight, we will have our regular session, and we have a few items on our business agenda, including a hearing on a land use issue, and these couple presentations this evening. I see we have our guests with us. So we will start off with the consent calendar, which consists of the minutes of our January 19th meeting. And if there are no corrections or additions to the minute, I would expect the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to accept the consent. Oh, should we wait until there's any? Sorry, I just jumped on that one.
No, they have to jump. If they want to jump, they have to jump if they're.
All right. No, sorry. I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor McKeel and/or Counselor Belts for the second. And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed. Thank you. For my mayor's report this evening, I don't have much. I would really like to again thank our council and our staff for Friday evening work that really was an interesting conversation for us all. And then Saturday, spending time talking about progress on our current goals, learning what our department heads are working on, what keeps them up at night right now, and thinking about how we can keep them up at night in the coming fiscal year, and how, what kind of work we can do together. So city manager Marty Wine and I described it as some really great group storming and forming. And for those of you who know that theory, we'll, we're right on time, right? Starting with the storming, figuring out how we work together, and learning a lot about each other. So again, thank you, everyone, for making the time for that. And we will be reporting on that to come. At this point, we see if anybody. Have met with their board and missions. I would like to work anything. I'm seeing none. Oh, Counselor.
Me that don't really know what they're looking at when they look at a tree. I just like digging holes and having fun with planting trees. They're going to evaluate that list to find trees that actually work well in neighborhoods. So for example, one of the trees on the list, if I had my notes, or if I could find my notes, I would tell you the type of tree, but it can grow 80 feet. And so that's probably not a good tree for a lot of neighborhoods, a lot of homes. So they're going to evaluate that list and come up with the top 15 or 20 trees. And then they're also talking about providing a photo of what that tree looks like when it's matured, so that homeowners can have a much better, they'll be able to make a better decision for themselves. So lots of good things happening, and that's my report.
And so again, on South Echols Street, at what time on Saturday, Carol?
On South Echols, it's 1 o'clock.
Thank you.
Coming on February 6th.
Playing in the mud. Okay, great. Counselor Oberst, and then Counselor Carey.
I just had a quick question for Carol, and I think for Suzanne as well. At one point, we were working with the university on a tree inventory for Monmouth. Does that still exist, or is that gone, et cetera?
No, there is a tree inventory, and every time they add some trees, they add to that inventory. So it still exists.
Great. And Counselor Carey.
Carol, one thing that I had suggested the tree board look at, like, you know, a while ago, is there are, there are a, and it just didn't get passed forward, I'm sure, with meetings and so forth. There are a couple of crepe myrtles that, and I believe it's on Powell Street, there may be two, that have kind of gone to the shrub. And, you know, so they're, as they get bigger, they're going to ultimately get into the parking area and onto the street. Now, crepe myrtles will appear as shrubs, but it was planted as a tree. So might be worth a look, and if the desire is to get that back to a tree, then some quick pruning would be in order. Yeah, I just, we walk by it periodically, and every time I walk by, I tell my wife, I gotta mention that to somebody. Well, here you go.
All right, I got it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, John.
Yes, the important work of being the liaison to a city board and commission, you get important information.
I just, I just feel like I've got so much to do now. It's good.
Good. I'm glad we gave you a task. And I will also go ahead and read the public comments information. I don't, I see people that are on here tonight that are speaking about specific issues. But if there isn't anyone, oh, I'm sorry, who would like to.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, anyone.
I do have a report from the MINET board, if I may.
Oh, thank you. Oh, sorry, Counselor Lopez, please, let's hear that.
My apologies there. I don't think I made myself known well enough there. So the MINET board, the MINET board has met. And amongst the items that we discussed is, I'm happy to say that we are anticipating MINET to be covering 100% of the debt service payment expected to be delivered in June. So I do know that we had discussed this as a high likelihood in the past. And, you know, while the future is not written yet, I am, I am very hopeful and would anticipate that this, that this forecast would hold true. Within, within the scope of that, we've been doing a little bit of additional work as well. There, there, I'm sorry to say that we will be, we will be losing Marilyn Morton as an employee of MINET. She has been, you know, she has been wearing a lot of hats and kind of phasing into her retirement, and so she actually retired effective at the end of January. So I'd like to, you know, on behalf of myself, really, really give some great thanks to her for her service and wish her luck in her retirement. She has agreed to continue contractual work as appropriate to facilitate board meetings. There's a lot of institutional knowledge there, and really, really hopeful to be able to continue on gaining from some of that knowledge as, as it is, as it is seen fit. We are also, the board is also evaluating the possibility of bonus, bonus payments to MINET employees. This is still very early in the, in the discussion. It was brought up by a board member in the last meeting. And the board clearly has a lot more, a lot more to consider with that moving forward. But with, with MINET weathering the, weathering the COVID issues that we've had this year, and being able to keep, keep on track with a lot of the new expansion, and get on track with the debt service payments, there, there are items to consider there in support of that. That will be dealt with at our next board meeting. And we have also changed the time of the board meetings. They used to occur in the mornings. They now, they now occur, occur in the evenings. We are still working into a cadence. We have some slight changes with board membership. But the next meeting will be February 25th at 4:30 PM, and it will, due to COVID, be held virtually. That concludes my, my report from the MINET board. Thank you very much.
Great. Glad we got that in there. That is excellent news. Thank you. And Counselor McKeel.
Yes, of course, after my report is when I find the file that I have been looking for. So I just have one short addendum is that Chuck Thurman was, he already submitted the application to, for the Tree City USA, and it, we haven't heard back from it, but the person he submitted it to liked the, the application. And so we're looking forward to that being accepted. Thank you for your patience.
Excellent. Yes, we need to keep our reputation and our streak going. It's our Tree City appointments. Were there any other reports that I missed? All right. I'll read our greeting for public comments. We don't have anyone.
This conference will now be recorded.
Before we go to a couple of other presentations, but if anyone is on the line that is interested in public comments, those comments will be entertained coming up. And if you wish to speak, please go into the upper right of your screen, into the chat bubble, and send a message to Phyllis Bowman. Type your name and the topic on which you wish to speak. We will limit those comments to three minutes or take additional information in writing. And typically, a speaker's comments are taken under advisement to allow time for the council to review an issue. However, we may ask the speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that directly addresses their comment. So please let us know if you are interested in that. We appreciate your attendance here as we go through a few more business items, the next of which will be a report from our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, council. And I have, actually, because I didn't send out Friday notes last week, I have a long city manager report, and I, I'm working out a way to submit this in writing. So hopefully, I'm going to abbreviate it, and I won't take a lot of your time tonight. But I'll send it off to you that's got, it's going to have more than what I'm sharing with you here. I also want to echo or repeat the thanks that the mayor offered for working together in the council priority setting session last Friday. The department heads and I were happy to be with you and hear your discussion. There's still work to do. I'm going to work together with the department heads to put together basically work plans that describe what we will achieve in the upcoming fiscal year within the priorities that the council has set. And we're aiming to have these back to council for a work session in the next, in the next few meetings. You're going to also want to have conversations about the three statements regarding equity, community engagement, and sustainability that you would like to draft. And we're going to schedule upcoming work session discussions for you to have those, that dialogue also. And we might even ask for your help in drafting some of those statements so that you can review them and work together on them. I'm going to just go department by department with a couple of highlights to give you some news of last week and this week. In the police department, I'm just going to give you a report about staffing. Our newest officer, Darian Handfield, is halfway through the basic police academy training. And I know the police department is counting the days until he'll return to begin his field training here in Monmouth. We've also, the department has selected their top candidate for the open police officer position, and that person is going to move forward to that background investigation phase. So that will take about a month or so to complete. And if that all goes well, then they'll go through a psychological evaluation and the pre-employment medical evaluation. So our hiring in the police department is moving forward, and we're excited to get folks on board. In the finance department, you're going to hear some of what I'm mentioning tonight from our finance director when she reports in tonight on the quarterly report. But last week, we proceeded with the MINET refunding and consultation with our bond rating agencies. And we got some good news, which is that our A-plus bond rating will be holding. And I think that she'll have a report for you about bond issue pricing. We've completed criminal justice information system audits in municipal court with no findings, which is good news. And I mentioned a couple weeks ago that beginning tomorrow, our municipal court proceedings will resume. So it's kind of a hybrid of in-person and virtual. But it will help us to get through the backlog of cases that have been piling up since December. Let's see. In the public works department, this week, we are welcoming a new employee, Jim Anderson. He's our water system distribution specialist. So he's state certified in water and wastewater systems operation. He has lots of experience, and we're very glad that he'll be bringing that to Monmouth. The only other thing I was going to mention in community development, this week, the city began rolling out the Love Local program. And I think you heard from our community economic development director, Suzanne Duffner, over the weekend about where that, what that program is set up to do. It's meant to, to support our local businesses so that if folks shop at a local retailer, one that has a physical storefront in Monmouth and is not a big chain store, basically, and turn-in receipts, we'll be offering a credit on the utility bill. And for the eligible local businesses, those are retail, restaurant, personal service businesses. And anyway, it's getting rolling now, and we're really excited and have gotten a good response to, to the Love Local Utility Credit Program. I think, let's see, CED staff is also still working with the Monmouth Business Association to roll out a new website for the business association. And that's going to include information about local businesses, places to explore, ways to get involved. And the website development came from a grant from the Ford Family Foundation and our coronavirus relief funding. So that's an exciting new development. We'll hope you'll check out. I'm going to just say a thing or two about COVID-19. Polk County is going to continue in the extreme risk category next week. The reports of our caseloads and our cases per 100,000 residents and our test positivity rate are moving in the right direction, but they're still in that extreme risk category. So the governor's order is in place until March 3rd. So for now, our city operations with our buildings, the doors are closed, but the services are being provided virtually. And one of the things that came out this week was additional guidance that allowed our local gym to open with some restrictions, but it's been, there've been some modifications to the guidance to how some businesses can operate. We're going to remain, we're going to reevaluate at the city level what reopening is going to look like in the coming weeks, depending on what happens with changes in the risk level. And we continue, the mayor and I meet weekly with some of our community partners, and we're tracking along with the distribution and availability of the vaccine in Polk County. And by all reports, Marion and Polk County are setting the model for how to get people vaccinated. And that varies week by week, as you know, depending on the availability and the distribution of the vaccine to counties. But we are hearing conflicting reports about people's ability to be able to access information and sign up for, for, for the vaccine appointments, and also community members declining the vaccine. And we're concerned about seniors and folks with disabilities being able to access vaccinations. So we're trying to prepare some information and get, get out information either through a video that the mayor may do and on our website and through the senior center to try to get better information for how to get the vaccine, at least for those in the 1A and 1B group who are eligible now for vaccination. And also, our CCO, Pacific Source Solutions, is putting together an immunization campaign to try to build trust and, and get information out about the COVID-19 vaccination and distribution. So if you know of trusted voices who could help with and encourage the vaccination process or help with access to information, I hope you'll please let me know. And some of you, I think, participated, and I did too, in the League of Oregon City's City Day at the Capitol last Thursday. And I wasn't able to attend the regional meeting, but I'm going to, in my city manager report, I'll provide some of the links to legislative priorities and an overview of the legislative session, which is well underway now. One of the highlights of the day was about encouraging all of us to reach out to our state legislators and to participate virtually in committee meetings. And that's, that's something that hasn't been available before, and there was a lot of encouragement to try to reach out. And, and I know we have a great relationship with our state representative and our state senator, but there's going to be a lot happening in a hurry here in Salem. I think that's it. Oh, one other note. I think at the beginning of the year, Mayor Coons distributed to you a request for feedback for our, the evaluation for our city attorney, Lane Shatterley.
I didn't.
Oh, you didn't?
Okay, no.
All right, well.
Thanks for the reminder.
I was going to, well, actually, the reminder was for everybody to return your feedback to the mayor. So we'll get that process rolling and ask for your feedback, and then we'll keep going from there. That's just a note for you that that's coming up soon. Sorry, Madam Mayor.
No, that's okay.
That's all I have from the mayor's report.
Totally was going to do that. Thank you. All right. And that's it. That's all I have. Any questions for Marty about that? Great information. We have a special presentation tonight, and this is from one of our great partners in the work that we've been doing to get information and resources out to businesses in Monmouth Independence. Kate Schwartzler is the owner and executive of the, of Indie Commons and a valued economic development partner in this, not only in our two cities, but in the region. And there's an exciting project that we, she and Suzanne Duffner have been working on. So I would love to have Suzanne, Kate, take it away.
Hi, great. I'll just do a real brief introduction for Kate. Mayor, I think you said it really well. She's one of the greatest economic development partners we have, and I really value all the wonderful things that she does. And I could not give you, through her service, by trying to listen to those many hats that she wears. But one of the needs that was identified early on in the pandemic, when we surveyed businesses in Monmouth Independence, was a need for some more one-on-one assistance with getting their businesses online and helping with marketing and helping them pivot to react to business conditions under, under these really challenging times. And so Kate responded super quickly and helped create from the ground up this new program in a really timely manner. To use, the City of Monmouth Independence are some of our coronavirus relief funds to help support it. So I was just invited her to come in and share some of the great, wonderful things that she was able to do with that program, and, and the hopes that maybe in the future, we'll also be able to partner with her again on it. So take it away, Kate.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Mayor and City Council, for the very warm welcome. It's always great to be able to give presentations on projects like this and how we can reach out and help the communities around us. It looks like you did receive a copy of the flyer in the packet, so I'll just hit the highlights of that. And then I'd love to, you know, be able to have some time to open it up to questions if people do have some, and talk about some next steps. So just very quickly, so Indie Idea Hub is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that was created a couple of years ago with the idea of being able to help businesses in our communities start, grow, and scale businesses, and really with the idea of creating a sustainable business community and helping our businesses thrive here locally. So we were able to really step in during COVID and provide a role for our local businesses that I think was received very well from, from people. And we've received some very positive feedback, and I think we're on to something that is, we'd love to continue and are actually currently trying to find funding to keep going with it. So essentially, I mean, COVID is this unprecedented time. Nobody could, could have predicted, you know, how long it was going to last, or even what sort of lasting impact this is going to have on our local businesses. So there have been lots of programs that support, you know, direct grant funding that helps with immediate needs, overhead costs, your rent, your utility. But looking at it from a different angle, what can we do to really support our business owners and provide them with resources that are going to help them through this difficult time, but at the same time, position themselves for long-term success? So yes, we want to get them through COVID, but we also want them to be very successful afterwards. And so looking at sort of some out-of-the-box thinking, I think one of the common solutions is to offer people a class. You know, come learn about how to do Google My Business, come learn about your finances, come learn about whatever. And we forget that these business owners are often sole proprietors. They're stretched really thin as it is. They don't have a lot of money to work with. So they know what they need. They know they need maybe a better website or an online ordering platform, or they really need to ramp up their social media, but they don't have a lot of time. They're exhausted. And they don't have a lot of money to hire somebody. And so we developed a program that essentially, working within the confines of the CARES Act funding, had some very strict timelines of what we needed to be able to spin up very quickly. And how could we help the most people? So we came up with seven different projects, if you will, that we could offer our local businesses with a one-on-one consulting capacity. So we're not asking you to take a class and learn how to build this website yourself. We will hire a consultant for you that will build the website for you. There's still a certain amount of time that the business owner needs to contribute towards that in terms of getting information to the consultant and working with them one-on-one. But it's much less than sitting through a six-week class or having to then put the time and effort into, you know, creating social media posts or developing an online platform. So this was fantastic because we also hired local consultants to provide that work. So we've made some lasting relationships. We've already had those relationships continue in some respects where they're saying, we're going to keep working with this person. We see the value in doing that. And so that was a double benefit of being able to do that. And now we have businesses that have an actual tangible resource that they've been able to employ or are very close to employing that's already showing some returns on their business. The other thing that we provided for everybody was a digital footprint review. So COVID really highlighted the issue for these business owners of you have to understand how you show up online. If your doors are physically not open, people are going to Google you, or they're going to look for you on a social media platform to see when your hours are. Are you open? Are you closed? Do you deliver, not deliver? Can I order online from you? And so we had a consultant that was able to perform these footprint reviews for everybody and just really gave some best business practices and tips and tricks for why it's really important for you to keep your information. why it's really important for you to keep your information online updated and why you need to have some central locations and ownership of that information. And so for example, our community is heavily reliant on Facebook. And I think if people follow along on the community chat groups, right when the election came along, or not the election, sorry, but the inauguration, and Facebook blocked a bunch of people for a couple of days. And business owners were like, oh no, now what? That's my connection. But the problem is with that, you don't own that information. You don't own anything that's on Facebook. And so highlighting the importance to people to own their own digital footprint and to make sure that that's secure. So we were able to help over 30 businesses or, sorry, right at 30 businesses, 20 in Independence and 20 in Monmouth. This was a joint project where both the city of Independence and the city of Monmouth contributed funding towards it. We provided 31 projects and they ranged anywhere from a business that said, I just need a new logo or I maybe need some better business cards to developing online ordering portals for people's websites or developing a new website for them. And we also did a lot with social media. But the other one that was, I think, a real benefit was doing some strategy work with, you need clients, you need to understand how to keep that kind of client funnel going in times of COVID. And so really working with them on some client engagement strategies that they can use immediately, but really that's just going to keep, you know, continuing to grow over time and will position them hopefully really well six months from now, a year from now, two years from now into the future and help them sustain that. We did include some information on approximate representation of jobs in the communities. I say approximate because it was self-reported and a lot of these business owners were sort of like, is this pre-COVID, middle of COVID, where are we at? So they gave their best estimate of how many part-time positions or full-time positions that they had and just so we could gauge a little bit the impact of this project on people. And then you can see from the testimonials, you know, we've had some just very positive feedback from people about the capacity that this project brought to them and giving them something that they felt like it was a tool or a resource for their business that they were able to integrate. And it's something that's going to be lasting for them and not something that, you know, when the money runs out after rent is paid, you're kind of left with that feeling of now what? Hopefully we can refill that bucket versus if you have a website or something that's up and running, that's a resource that you can put information into and then continue to build on and grow. So again, we, we've had some really good feedback on the program, learned a lot, a lot of good things, a lot of things that we would probably tweak in the future. This is a program that Indie Idea Hub, the nonprofit, is really intent on continuing and actually refining it based on some of the feedback that we have. And one of the things that we're looking at right now is being able to categorize businesses into sort of a readiness score. So we have some businesses that are very new or they're in that kind of one to two-year startup timeframe. What they need is very different than a business that has four or five years kind of under their belt in terms of what they're working with. And so being able to more quickly funnel people to the resources that they probably need at that timeframe. The other thing that we're looking at that's targeted and more specific is financial literacy. Across the board, we have found that there's lacking in our communities. And it's not, and it's not just Independence and Monmouth. This is nationwide, statewide, you know, it's something that everybody is struggling with. It's more of a small business issue. But that's something where if we can really lift that up for our communities, that's going to have a really big impact on the sustainability of our business ecosystems. But it's a little more difficult. We needed a little more timeframe to be able to work with that in terms of really putting some pieces in place that we're going to support people's businesses with that. So like I mentioned, we're actively seeing funding to continue this forward. I think we're going to be able to bring some really great partners onboard. And so whether this is maybe a once-a-year program, a cohort program, we'll have to see kind of how that plays out. But I think there are also some opportunity with maybe some continued CARES Act funding or COVID relief funds that may still be coming down the line that would provide us with some opportunity to more quickly get some resources out to our business owners. So with that, if anyone has any questions or would like more information, I would certainly be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Kate or Suzanne? Counselor Carey?
This is a wonderful program and I think it's an excellent idea. And I've talked to a couple who have really appreciated what it's done for them. I guess what, what I don't know is, is, and it may just be my own ignorance, but how well has this been publicized out to the public? I for one would like to see a sort of a listing of who participated, what came as a result of it. I know there's a number of web, at least a couple have done websites that are really nice. And, you know, that would do two things. One, it would promote the businesses if we could get a listing and links to that. And then it would also trumpet the, the program that Kate, you and, and I put together. A little more publicity, I think, would be, would be some good. You got plenty to do on there. I know one would like to see what's been done in the different.
And we do have to feel like the excuse that funding was so rapid that we kind of felt like printed through it to the end and then we're in kind of the, we went and earned. And then also there were some grants opened. Seen some attention, trying to capture some of those opportunities there, but do have plans to do a press release about it. And I think it's great to be able to highlight the stories around the business owners that we help push. You know.
I will check with our city. Do we have any public comments either that were submitted in advance or here ready for us this evening?
I did not get public comments submitted in advance or no one has contacted me via chat.
All right. Particularly our new members have recently learned about the process that our council goes through
Decision, make a decision regarding changes to use process. We also have a new form.
In a quasi judicial, whether you like or don't like, you are receiving the facts, you are applying the facts to the applicable criteria development code and determining whether the application meets the applicable development criteria. And if it does, then the application merits your approval. Second, your testimony, any testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed toward these criteria or other criteria that are in the comprehensive plan or zoning code that a witness believes apply to this application. Third, a failure to raise an issue that is sufficient to afford the decision makers or other people an opportunity to respond may preclude appeal of a decision on this basis. And finally, to the applicant, can you raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Now back to you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. At this point then, I will have the staff present the staff report on this issue.
Hey, let's get my screen set up here. So bear with me as I start to have a short PowerPoint presentation. Started here. All right. Can you all see that on the, on your screens? Okay. Yeah, on your screen. So we'll come to you. All right. So we have the public hearing for comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change 20-02. And by way of background information, the applicant for this particular case is, and the same as the owner, is Jack Fox. The request is to rezone approximately 1.28 acres from medium density residential to commercial retail. This property is located, the physical address is 137 Monmouth Independence Highway. You know that property better as the S Curves or Ash Creek Station. It's the southernly parcel south of Ross Fresh Market, it's the new grocery store. The current zoning is medium density residential. And as I mentioned, the property size is 1.28 acres. This is a type three action as defined by our city zoning ordinance. That means that the planning commission's role is to make a recommendation and then it's actually the city council that makes a final decision on the application. Also by way of background information, 2019, there was a home on the property and that was demolished. In addition to some onsite wetland mitigation that was completed and permitted at that time. In April 2019, the applicant applied for a modified site plan review for the property just north of this. They did show this parcel as a phase two that was subject to going through a rezone process in order to do commercial development on it. So the planning commission did approve that. And as you are aware, there's development has started in the Ash Creek Station. In November of this past year, the conference of plan map amendment and zone change application was filed. And just in terms of making folks familiar with the development process, this is just specifically for assigning the zoning and plan map amendment designation. There is also several steps after this before the property can actually develop for a specific business or use. It will have to come back the more specific development plan to the planning commission through what's called design review. And then after planning commission approval is when the, the business or developer would be able to apply for building permits to actually start construction on the site. So just by way of showing where the property is located at, this aerial photo has the property highlighted in blue outline. And you can see it's at the corner of that Monmouth Independence Highway, also kind of where it turns the corner on Moon Street East and Edwards Road. You can see surrounding uses consist of the manufactured home park. There are some single family homes. There are some commercial uses, church, the faith Lutheran church across the street. And then again, development that's begun in Ash Creek Station, commercial development to the north. Surrounding zoning designations include the pink to the north is commercial retail, which is a zone that's being requested. The yellow color where the church property is located at is the low density residential. This kind of peach reddish color is commercial office. And then the medium density residential zone district is this brown color that also includes the subject property. The approval criteria for comprehensive plan zone change include five separate criteria. And in general, the applicant has to meet one of three standards. They have to show there's been an error in the zoning, a change in neighborhood conditions, our public need for the particular zoning that's being requested. So they only have to meet in one of those three standards. They also have to show that the change is consistent with our comprehensive plan goals and policies and that there are adequate public facilities, services and transportation networks to support that change. The proposed change also has to be consistent and appropriate considering the surrounding land uses and density and pattern of development in the area, looking at that compatibility issue. And finally, it needs to be consistent with our Oregon statewide planning goals. Just to kind of take you through a quick high level review of those criteria, there are detailed findings in the staff report that address each one in pretty much more detail. I can give you some of the highlights here. In terms of the criterion one, looking at if the use, which of the three sub criteria it meets, this one actually meets two of them. The one that talks about the change in neighborhood conditions, certainly since the zoning was originally applied, there has been quite a bit of development, especially the development on the Ash Creek Station that is now commercial use, which this request would be consistent with. There's also a public need for more commercial lands. We are getting towards the kind of the end of our 20 year supply of commercial land. And so looking at parcels that are available is getting, there's going to be a shortage of that. So. And then conversely, looking at the zoning that it's in now, actually have by our recent housing needs analysis, a certain residential zone land. So we wouldn't be giving up land that was identified to meet our 20 year residential needs with this change. Criterion two again looks at whether or not the change is consistent with our comprehensive plan and the applicable goals and policies. The main ones we're looking at here are housing, economic development and transportation. The proposed change even with losing 1.2 acres of residential lands, we will assess to meet our projected needs. In terms of economic developments, by going through a commercial zone designation, we'll be increasing the supply of land available for employment uses and encourage a variety of uses consistent with our comprehensive plan economic development goals. Terms of transportation goals and policies, the applicant did provide an analysis here by engineer that discussed findings concerning the statewide transportation, we call that TPR for short. And a little bit of the highlights of that review. That review looks at whether or not the change going from residential to commercial will have a significant impact on our transportation system. The Oregon highway plan defines a significant change and would increase the daily trips by more than 400 per day. So if we look at a reasonable worst case scenario, under the current zoning, the medium density residential zoning, the average trip generated would be 496 trips per day. The applicant is proposing a trip, we call a trip cap on future use of the site such that any news is on the site would not generate more than 896 trips per day. So that's the scenario in the multi-family zone that we have today, plus the 400 trips, which the OHP has defined as would trigger a significant increase. So you'll see that that is one of the recommended conditions that staff is recommending be placed on the zone change. In terms of criterion three, whether or not there's adequate public facility services and transportation, there are adequate public facilities. Those have been started to station the city's public works department, power and light provided comments saying that the property can be served. And the property, as we get a more specific development plan, will be required to complete their onsite public utility improvements. That will include some improvements to the highway adjacent to the property. A criterion four looks at whether it's approved.
So I'm clear. In the shop area, you know, the rocks, the Papa Murphys, the existing, that were to cut through this property and go on to Edwards Road will not be counted towards the 800 and trip. Towards the eight hundred and six trip.
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, I believe, uh, Lane had something first. Just ask my question.
Go ahead, uh, I answer to Councilwoman Lopez's question. You go ahead.
Okay, um, well, I was wondering, is there a cordon? How is it determined? Is it by complaint? Determined if they exceed that.
We, we, when they met their, um, their planning proposal through that design review process. They'll, you know, they tell us what the use is. You know, we don't know what that is at this point. It has to be something that's allowed in that commercial retail zone. But if it's, uh, medical, for example, there, there's a specific number of, um, this that we know from the traffic study averages when we look at these things. Um, and, and that's when the determination is, is made, when the, when that, you know, is part of that property developing. So it's, yeah, it's what you're saying, like over time, it's not like we actually go out there and do trip counts and say, oh, you know, we have a little meter or something. Right, you're right, shut it down. Actually, we, we do it ending on copy. So if they go to change, say, from that one commercial office use to another one, they're still held to that standard in the future. And we go through a new analysis of, okay, what is, you know, the new use, the trips that are generated by that? So it's all done as part of the, the planning and permitting process that we review that.
So I'm not suggesting this in any way, but the rest is Stanford University made agreements with the county. If they exceeded the number of cars going onto campus, it was a $2 million fine. So that's why I was wondering, how do we, how? Yes, not that I want the money, but.
Yeah, I, that's interesting. I don't know that we're set up for that.
All, all right. Thank you. Lane, I will have to answer the question regarding the property.
Uh, well, I should say, there's a very small triangular piece that's owned by Pope County. And then the balance of it, right away. So there's a property where.
Yep.
That's, that's highway curves around.
That's either way, there's a small triangular lot in there that's owned by Pope County, which is right away as well.
Okay, thank you.
Gotcha. Any other questions of staff? Applicant and others in favor to speak. Spoken and written testimony will now be received from those in favor of the applicant. Uh, we'll start with the applicant and ask state address for the record. And then, uh, we will have write copies written to Tony. I believe there is some in our packet. And then we'll be able to take questions of the applicant. So, um, I see the application is made by Cascadia Planning and Development, Stephen K. And it looks like we have. Seeing no questions of Steve, anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this zone change? All right, seeing of those. Neutral testimony. So at this time, we will take spoken testimony and submission of written testimony from those neutral to the application. If anyone would like to provide, uh, questions or testimony, please, uh, raise your hand or let Phyllis know, state your name and address for the record. We will then ask for any copies of written testimony that might result from this, um, comment. Okay. May Phyllis? We have anyone who has submitted neutral testimony?
There is not, Mayor Coons.
Thank you. We will now move to those opposed. So if there is anyone who would like to provide spoken or written Tony? Just to state your name and address for the and be prepared to provide written copies of the testimony, um, after this conclusion of this. And seeing none, Phyllis, did we receive, um, opposition, any written testimony in opposition? All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we would listen to the applicant's rebuttal, but we have nothing to rebut. Um, so I will ask for a city staff summary, or if you have any response, uh, to the applicant's testimony, which was provided to us.
Yeah, so, um, no additional comments, just noting that there are, uh, sample motions, uh, proposed motion in the, on in your packet, page seven, um, you are ready for it. And again, the planning commission's recommendation was to approve subject to that one condition of approval.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any further questions from the city council? Seeing none, I will close this hearing. And, uh, we will move to the deliberation and decision portion of this issue. We may, at this point, uh, only ask questions of staff. No questions could be asked of anyone who provided testimony or who failed to provide testimony during the hearing. Um, and we can, at this point, uh, if there's any comments from the council, we also have the option at this point to, uh, delay our decision. Um, and however, if you would like to make a decision this evening, as Suzanne said, there is a motion in, uh, the materials that will explain exactly what we need to cover here. Questions, comments? Counselor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'd like to think, uh, I'd like to thank, um, staff as well as the applicants for doing their due diligence with, um, with regard to this property. Um, I did have a number of questions going into this, and I, I'm happy to report that all of my personal questions were either, um, already answered through the, uh, through the, um, process or asked by other counselors. Um, as, uh, as such, and having found those answers, um, more than satisfactory, um, I would like to, uh, I would like to know if you're entertaining a motion, Madam Mayor.
I am, unless there are any other questions.
In that case, I move to approve comprehensive plan map amendment, zone change two zero dash O two, as recommended by the planning commission and as presented in the staff reports, including the findings of fact, and to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to adopt C P M A dash Z C two zero dash O two.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez for the motion, and Counselor Salinas Oliveros for the second. Lane, I have one question in my new script. Um, it indicates that a motion would include any conditions of, in, of approval. Those are contained in our staff report. Do we need to call them out specifically in the motion?
Uh, Chris, I thought I heard you say something about conditions in your motion. Was that not in the motion? Let's just make it clear for the record that the recommendation includes the, uh, adoption of the conditions of approval, and they will be in the ordinance that you see at your next meeting.
And for the record, I am happy to amend the motion to include.
Thank you. And Counselor Salino to the, in the amended motion?
Yes, I'll second the amended motion.
Thank you very much. All right. Any discussion? Thank you. Then I will, uh, believe potentially a roll call on this.
No, voice mode is fine. A roll call will come with the ordinance.
With the ordinance. All right. Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? Uh, Counselor Oberst?
I'm, I'm not opposed. I voted yes on asking for an opportunity to say something when you're done.
Okay, that's not my script, but, um, I believe, Phyllis, you have a six oh vote in favor of, um, this, um, comprehensive plan amendment. And we will have, uh, a, an ordinance that will be returned to us, which we will then go through that process separately. So. Counselor Oberst, your comment?
So I've been involved in a, a project around land use planning and getting people to participate more in land use planning. I just want to say, this new process is good. Um, it's, it's much clearer to the layperson, I think, than the old script. And, and, uh, this, this was a really clear land use process this time. I've been involved in more than a couple of these over the past twenty years, and this is by far the easiest to digest.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Steve and Paul Yields from White Oak Construction for joining us this evening. We appreciate you being here, uh, to answer questions. And we will move on in our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item, another presentation. We have with us, uh, the members of our team from FFA Architects, um, to discuss current, uh, information update on our city council project. So, uh, Marty, are you starting us off?
I'm going to start us off tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Um, let's see, I'm going to just make a few introductory comments. And we, most of you have been on a, a path that has been, that has been a long one for knowing that we have needed to replace our city hall. And tonight's presentation takes us into the next chapter and the successive chapters of design for replacement for our city hall. So, um, we've been working with FFA since, or FFA Architecture since two thousand and nineteen. And they have brought us through these, each of these design phases. And we're at the detailed design or the, the design development phase, um, where what we'd like to have you do tonight is hear from FFA. The idea is that we're at a phase where you'll be able, or at a point in this design where you're going to be able to see the detailed design for the building, but also refine cost estimate. So the idea of tonight's presentation is that we have the information that will help us to inform community engagement efforts that are going to be going forward for our May two thousand and twenty-one. This year, we're going, um, out to voters for a lawn measure. Um, we want to inform you about, um, I think they're probably small changes that you last heard about in August about the plans for the building. But we're now at a point where, um, our community is going to, maybe, I mean, maybe they already are playing, paying attention to what is going to be in this building. And, and the fact that as we move closer to the reality of being able to replace it as we assemble funding, um, we're going to spend a little more time tonight just walking through what some of the features of the building are and a reminder about the community input that we've received to be able to reach the point um, of what this design will look like. And as we have been interested in all along, the latest cost estimates for, that will move us to develop construction and bid documents later in two thousand and twenty-one. So I'm not sure that there's a whole lot of history that I need to, um, go over. Most of you have, um, been along with FFA as we've gone through these, each of these design phases. Um, council also has gone through a process to make the decision to, um, combine, uh, the replacement of city hall with volunteer hall here on the site. Um, and what we're looking at in, what you saw in the schematic design phase was, it envisioned a, a fifteen thousand, about fifteen thousand square foot building. And it would be a replacement of volunteer hall and city hall on the ground. And I think you know, um, everybody who's living in city hall now, it includes our finance, community and economic development, planning and building administration and city reporter functions. So in addition to those functions.
And court.
A new, yes, thank you, and court. And so in addition to those functions, the new building would, um, create a space where the city council and the court would be able to function, and also a public plaza on the front of the, of the property. So back in August, when you saw the schematic design, um, in, it was in, I think it was in August or September, um, you saw a cost estimate that ranged, uh, around eight point nine million dollars. And most of you know and have been along for the decision process for how we'd fund a new city hall. And in between August and October, you went through a conversation where you decided that you would, um, create a three, the city is going to have, I think it was being called the three-legged stool, but I think of it as three, three buckets of funding to be able to assemble funding to replace the city hall. That includes your urban renewal funding, um, city reserves and a general obligation bond. And that general obligation bond will require voter approval, which is why we're going out to ask voters to help us assemble that funding coming up here in May. So what we're trying to do is design this building. At the same time, we're trying to figure out how much we have to pay for it. And we've, and we've assembled enough funding to be able to, um, to, to do what you're seeing tonight. So really, what we'd like for you to do tonight is, is hear from FFA about this evolving design, um, hear about the latest cost estimate. I know you will probably have many questions that don't just have to do with the design process. And my hope is that we will schedule additional time, even after you see how the design process is moving forward, to be able to ask questions about how we will communicate with the community. And some of the other, I think there's lots of logistical questions about what does it take to really replace our city hall? So I, I'm very appreciative of the FFA team for being with us all to, to bring us to this point. The idea is that once we've reached this phase of design, that if you, um, accept this report tonight, what we'll do is our next phase would be getting ready to go to construction bid documents. And I think we would only do that once we knew that we had assembled. and I think we would only do that once we knew that we had assembled the funding to do it. But we're really excited to present to you tonight a great design for a replacement city hall. As a side note, I just want to let council know we've been doing some other due diligence work with soils and geotechnical and environmental assessments of the site so that we have an understanding of what we're working with here on site. So we have lots going on with our with our city hall replacement project, but tonight we wanted to make sure that you could see FFA's latest work, and they've been working diligently since the end of 2020 to put together this this next design package for us. And so I think what I'll do is hand it off to FFA from here. You can see how this has come along, and then we'll we'll work together to answer questions once you've heard from the FFA team. And who's starting us off, Troy or Joe?
I will start us off. Thank you.
Troy, if you don't mind introducing your team again, we have some new council members that I would introduce to you. Rebecca Salinas Oliveros, Carol McKeel, and John Oberst, who have spent many years in the mayor's seat, has returned on council. So he has longtime knowledge of this project and was involved at some of our open houses and has been following this. But I appreciate if you'd introduce Richard and Joe to them.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, city councilors. My name is Troy Eensworth. I'm a principal with FFA Architecture, and I'm really happy to be here tonight to update you on our efforts. Richard and Joe, would you guys introduce yourselves, please?
Sure. Richard Grace, I'm a partner with the firm. I've been really excited and happy to kind of be part of this project, so glad to be here.
Joe Malbus here. I am a projects manager at FFA, and like Richard said, very excited to be on this project. I think it's developed wonderfully, and I'm excited how far we've brought it and to see where it'll go.
Thanks very much. What we'd like to do first is just mention the project goals. I know there are several people who weren't in on the various stages of this project. As was mentioned, we started almost two years ago, and we did some preliminary work to get us to the point of deciding that the best option was to remove the existing buildings and build a new structure on the existing site. Then, while we were in schematic design last year, pre-COVID, just pre-COVID, we were able to have two in-person public meetings in January and February of 2020. And through those efforts, we were able to refine our ideas about what the project should be and worked with our project team from the city to do that. Could we move forward to the project goals, please? So the project goals were, started to be discussed with the team when we started in 2019, and they were refined as we went along. The goals here, you can see in bold, the that are involved are to provide a strong connection between Main Street. One of the things that's unique about this project is for the city hall functions to be right on Main Street. So that's a great opportunity. Another one, the building should be right-sized for Monmouth. So when we were looking at this, we were taking into account not only what was required from the city agencies that were going to occupy the building, but what other functions the city had in other facilities and where were they? So that helped us to right-size the building for the community. The building should be functional, efficient, and sustainable. This is a long-term estimate, so those elements, along with flexibility and functionality and security, are uppermost in our minds as we've gone about designing the project. And last but not least, the building should be a long-term asset to the community. The community only builds a facility like this once in a number of iterations, and so the opportunity is great, but the responsibility is great as well to come to the best solution that will provide the longest-term benefit to the community. Next.
So I'll jump in here. The next couple of slides we have prepared, and these, these are from earlier in the design process, but these show how we defined our design parameters through looking at Main Street mostly there and the neighboring buildings, and that informs what what the site and how the site wanted to react to Main Street there. So the first concept here is just is just taking the storefront, the storefront window that most, almost all the businesses have going on there, and then a heavier second story, often a brick, and continuing that through the building. Second concept there is to have this, the corner of the space be, have, there's a plaza there, and to have that be welcoming for, and and kind of make the best use of of the whole corner and the other buildings and everything going on there by having that be open space. The third one there is very simple, just making the best use we can of the light from from different directions, most notably the south and north, and then we have to be careful of west and east light, but the, what we came away with here was, it would be nice to have a terrace on the roof accessible from the second floor of the building and make the best use of this arrangement that way. On this, the next sheet here, we look at rhythm of storefronts, or other buildings rather, from the street, and we see some sort of, some patterns repeated over and over, whether it's these bigger bays or smaller groups of windows on the on the first and second floor. So we took a look at many of the buildings there on the street and and tried to figure out the best way translate that into into our design. Also, on the street, we have a variety of different heights of buildings, so it was important for us to have have the building have some transition points in it and not just be a Monmouth there on the street. And I think that ties it into the neighboring buildings better.
I think, yeah, let me just make a quick comment on on this, and I think that this is kind of the, one of the main driver for us in terms of the city hall design. I think Mayor mentioned at some point that we really wanted this building to be an anchor to the Main Street. They will be here for generation, so we really wanted to take the essence we've had in Main Street, study it, incorporate the essence of them rather than literally or forget your of them. I think that was some of your words, Mayor, in our open public forums. And I think what we were hoping to do is really take the essence of these and incorporate them in our city.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Moving on to the site plan here.
Hey, Joe, I think you need to enlarge it.
All right.
Thanks.
There you go. Main Street to the north here, we have the visit, the building positioned in this L shape here with the larger portion, city hall portion on this side, and then the one-story council and chamber functions in this, in this wing of the L. So on the corner, we have this plaza that opens up to this, the council chamber, and also invites people in and to use this space. The this tree that, the large tree that's there will remain, as well as the two Japanese maples, I believe they are, that are right here, makes sense for those to remain, the chess table, and and this, this will be landscaped area, and then the the plaza is hardscaped. There are benches in there, some bollards, bike racks, flags, everything we need to get into that space. The, so I'll just work around the building here. We do have our front entrance up here on Main Street. This alley is. Here. Looks like it is now. And then we have, we have steps up on the other side. This, this space is, we do have some electrical meter. And this portion of the building is sort of a general city worker area, so a meeting room and a break room, and like I mentioned, access to the idea here. Going to the other portion of the building, the one-story portion of the building, we have our council court and then support for that. So there is a control point here, and everything would be behind that over here. So, you know, judges' chambers, jury executive conference room, and all the support for their, for their courts and council. And let's see. Moving to the second floor of the, calling the office portion of the building.
Joe, would you enlarge that a little bit?
Is that, is that showing up well?
Yep.
Okay. We have the core again, many of the same things there. We have had to fit in some space analytical IT, things of that nature, and just, so we were able to fit it, fit that into the core in some instances and kind of along with part and others. So on the north side of this one, we have, you know, city manager, mayor, city recorder, offices, additional offices, and then you also see, there's a big meeting room and a smaller meeting room. So I imagine these would be used by everyone. There is storage in this space, two, two storage spaces. And on the south of this portion, we have the building and community development area, so that has its own entrance and reception, and then offices and open space as well. This, this would be the the access to the roof terrace up here, and that is about it. We do have, we have a second, an egress stair here in the back, or I should say on the, on the west, sort of tucked away.
Yeah, these, these plans looks very similar to what you saw last time, and I think some of the the changes and improvement that we've we've done is really based on some of the feedback that we got from the staff. We looked at the the public restroom again and separating those, but yet providing a universal toilet for the public as well, so you get some flexibility in there when the court is in heavy use. We look, look at providing a shower on the upper floor for bike commuters that allows you to have the ability to kind of have a place to kind of change and and get cleaned up if you're biking to work. And we, as required by code, we kind of added a wellness room as well for, I believe in the first floor, right, Joe?
Yeah, sorry, I'm jumping around a bunch here, but that one is on the first floor right here.
Yeah. So those, I mean, the the diagram and the flow of the floor plan hasn't changed a lot. I think we've zoomed in a little bit more to kind of look at more details, review the picture that we actually really had, the things that they need in the floor plans. So some of the change that you're not seeing probably in this color plan, but we have a whole technical package that can show some of that technical additional information that we added, so. Go ahead, Joe.
That's great.
You could zoom in a little bit. So you, you prime view, and I think it's. So you you prime view and I think uh it's it hasn't changed much in terms of. The design of the project that you saw last time, and I think it's consistent with. What we talked about in terms of how we uh designed the the building. How it meets the ground, uh connect to meet the main street, the whole idea that the. The the first floor of the two-story volume, the building, uh really going to provide you a a transparent uh uh facade to the building. Yet balancing to the privacy and and kind of the safety of the people that work behind those windows. The Joe mentioned the whole idea of a corner entry that's prevalent uh on all the buildings that you have, main street, as well as part of your zoning. Uh preference in terms of, you know, what have been the entry of the building. The pattern of the windows, the rhythm of the windows, the masonry, all are essence of things that we like in the street. I think the whole idea of the chamber being set back a little bit to allow a a gathering in the front. And having that as kind of a lantern as a for people as they kind of get closer to the building is it's almost. Uh it's a symbolic kind of uh optimism to some degree. But so uh the whole idea of uh that part of the building. Uh lowered in it, but really kind of prominent in terms of how how it relates uh to the street, you know, setback, but yet, you know, backdrop for. Uh what you guys stand for. Uh so it it's it's not. Classical in a way, but it really takes in all the the elements that uh that we discussed and the kind of design drivers in the beginning, so. Next one, Joe. Uh we took some of those ideas and they've kind of. Uh mirrored it on the south side facade of the building, allowing a little bit more of a transparency where. Uh the staff would have a breakout, uh a kitchen area, they're allowing them to have a little bit of a. Uh patio in the back, uh even though you, you know, there's a parking lot in there, give you a little bit of a buffer. And a little bit of a uh like, you know, in a good day, be out there. A very well-defined entry uh for them as well, so that this is the south view uh of the the building. But I think one of the main uh ideas that that in terms of feedback that we got from the public forum and the public meetings that we got is the whole notion that. Uh the place should be accessible, but warm and inviting. And as much as we can, we wanted to have both the the finishes and the structure of the building be one and kind of gives you that glowing. Warm, inviting space as you are either inside the building or uh looking at it outside. And I do it because of this notion of a welcoming building. Uh so this is a view looking east. Of the community room and the chamber. And courts, basically, multi-purpose room that allows you to. Kind of have a very open north-facing, which that is the best light that you can get uh in terms of not having glare, not having heat gain. Uh but balancing that with we understand kind of the notion of privacy and safety for for you guys as you have events that happen. Do somebody zoom in a little bit? This is the view uh looking on. Uh it's like the gold all the way in the back is kind of the the main street entry. You're standing basically uh in front of the main doors to the court uh paper. And in the middle is is no connection to the second floor, and as you could see, it. Well lit, and then again, the structure and the wood net comes to the main character of the faces inside. Next, Joe. I mean, last.
All right, so um what do we add? Uh where are we with our cost estimating? So. One of the besides refining and expanding on the design of the de- uh the design development set that uh we've just completed. Um includes not only the architectural design, but also um engineering design. So we have a structural, mechanical, electrical plumbing design. We have civil and we have landscape. And so the purpose behind investing in that additional design work was to confirm um and um refine. Uh the cost estimate that we uh presented as part of the schematic design package last summer. So um the bottom line is that the bottom line is essentially the same as it was. We our our total estimate for the project cost is just under nine million dollars. And the land share of that is in the direct construction cost. So. Um Joe, could you enlarge the direct construction cost portion, please? Great, thank you. So the direct construction cost is essentially all the costs associated with building the project, the site, the building. And there's some big um elements there that are called out as to what this number includes. Um one of the things that we did as we moved from schematic design into design development is we reduced the estimated contingency from. Um ten percent to five percent. Because we have a lot more detailed information, and so we're kind of trading. Money, if you will, where we had a higher contingency before because we didn't have a a a more evolved design. Now we do, so we've moved some of that money from contingency into exact things that are in our design development package. Um our cost estimator, even though we've been in the COVID environment and the economic. Um problems that have come from that, the construction industry still has a certain amount of escalations that are prudent to. Um plan for. So we're recommending a five percent per year cost escalation um until construction starts. Right now, so that we're comparing apples to apples or our design development set to our schematic design development or our schematic design set. Right now, the estimate number you have in front of us, in front of you, assumes a construction start of June twenty twenty-one. Um which is still possible with a May bond. We just have to talk about how that could actually be done. Uh there is, I did want to bring up one thing, the backup to this, a couple pages beyond this. Um calls out a construction start of June twenty twenty-two, which is incorrect. These numbers are based on a June twenty twenty-one construction start. If it's June twenty twenty-two, the right thing to do would be to add five percent escalation to this to these numbers. Okay, so what does this seven point six million dollars not include? It doesn't include land acquisition. Uh leasing or moving costs. Um we've had some brief discussions with our working group from the city about. What moving might happen or where they might go, but the right now, the anticipation is that there won't be land acquisition costs since the city owns these properties. Um Joe, if you could drop down just a little bit to project costs, so what are project costs? Um these are things that you have to do to get the project done that are not building things, so they're. Fees for people like us and our consultants, permitting, testing, administration, interest. Uh those types of things. So uh we typically assume a certain amount of construction cost. Um for these, and they vary from one um project to another because different clients have different costs, and so. This is our best estimate of what the city's costs would be for this project. And then um lastly, included in the number. We have assumed in the the drawings that you have in front of you, the renderings, that all of the loose furniture or what we call FFNE. Is um going to be new. It doesn't have to be, or it could be paid for in other ways, but right now, we're including a certain amount for new furniture in this. Um and it includes the items you see there, table seating, systems furniture. It does not include equipment such as computers, copiers, those types of things. And it does not include built-in casework because anything that's attached to the building. Is assumed to be provided by the con- general contractor and is in the direct construction cost. So all of that then adds up to a little less than um an estimate of nine million dollars. Um Joe, could you go to the next page? I'm not going to dwell on this um because uh. It's a lot of detail, but this is a bit of a breakdown by what we call CSI specification section that shows you kind of the areas that the the that. Uh money goes to, and then it also breaks down the co- uh cost um. Uh add-ons at the bottom, if you could go up page just a little, Joe. So there's the design contingency, the index to construction start, general conditions, et cetera. And. Then that also breaks down, sorry if you could go back. That also breaks down the building and the site costs. And um then the next page is. Uh the totals. And then we did talk about some alternates, and so those are broken down here. There was some discussion, these are fairly small, so I won't spend much time on them. Alternate one just has to do with how much security we have at the service points in the building. There are three service points, as Joe pointed out, there's the finance or bill-paying area, there's the courts. And then upstairs, there's the interaction counter for the building and development folks. So. We've got either standard or security um glass in those locations. Um alternate two is is FFNE, but that has just to do with the break room area. And then alternate three is uh the um essentially roughing in for a generator to be provided in the future, so. Um there was discussion about how much uh what kind of an emergency or facility would this be? Essentially, it's not. Being designed as an essential services facility, but there was a re- uh desire that a generator be provided. Um at some point in the future, so we have provided a location for it and rough in for it. So those are the alternate items. And that pretty much does it for our presentation. We'd love to take your questions and discussion.
Thank you. Once again, it just kind of gives me chills. I love seeing it and hearing the story about how you came to this design. Um and I think it's a wonderful story for us to be able to tell to the people of Monmouth about why we need this building and. Um how it will serve them for many, 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 many years. Um and certainly reflect our our pride, so. Um comments, questions, uh for again, those of us who've seen not a lot of changes there, but. Uh curious particularly for our new folks, and and John Oberst, I can see you barely, you're timing because of the screen presentation, but I think you have your hand up, so I'll have.
Yes, exactly. I was actually going to ask that the screen sharing be turned off so we can actually see each other.
Sure, let me figure out how to do this real quickly.
Thank you.
You you didn't have other comments, John?
I will. Go ahead. Chris has his hand up. I'm sure others have questions too.
All right, uh Chris Lopez and John Carey.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you uh very much, uh Councilor Oberst for for deferring there, and um. Thank you again to the FFA team for for doing this good work and putting together this wonderful presentation. I really uh really appreciate the thoroughness with which you uh you do present for us. Um although I do have a couple questions, uh specifically uh specifically surrounding any um. You know, green design concepts, eco-friendly concepts or materials, um or any locally sourced materials that will be uh utilized in the building.
That's great. Uh thank you for that question, and that has been a big topic of discussion we've had. Um Richard, would you like to take that one on?
Absolutely. I think. The the feature and the feel of the space is actually the most sustainable part of the project, which is the wood part. And having the ability to source that locally or close by would be something that, you know, would. Again, tell a story about you and how you approach your building in terms of sustainability. The whole idea of carbon footprint and carbon sequestration will be a big story for this building in terms of how uh you're uh working with sustainability. Uh Joe, you want to add anything?
No, I I think that's 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 right there. The the uh the material for the CLT. Um it it it's um most likely from the Pacific Northwest, but possibly from. Uh over there on Highway twenty in um just uh just east of uh. Where is it? Just east of Salem, I guess, so um within a couple hundred miles. So th- that's um that's the most sustainable feature to it is is the wood uh the wood structure.
And all the materials and finishes will be obviously, it's given that we would be looking at sustainability as a factor in all of those in terms of. Uh recycled content and kind of help in terms of, you know, the the quality of the materials as well as uh. The durability of those materials will be part of how we look at uh sustainability. And it starts really uh a lot of things that you make decision early on in the project in which really orienting, I think. Joe had a little bit of a diagram in the beginning, the whole idea of really orienting the building in the right way to uh. Work with the climate that you have, uh harnessing kind of natural light. That you can control, especially if your exposure is south and north, you have the ability to kind of have those light go in the building without uh doing a lot of things, you know. We were we're, we've been hoping to avoid a lot of uh east and west light uh on the building uh due to glare and heat gain. So all those little things that doesn't cost a lot in terms of. Uh orienting the building the right way has been really uh at the forefront or the beginning, the genesis, and how we designed the building. Uh so daylighting, uh natural uh light access to everyone is a key as part of our sustainability approach as well, and those are all. Very much fundamental or even common sense uh design that, you know, if you don't think about those, really, it's. You're going to be fighting those all the way in a building, so.
Yeah, it it some of these, some of the sustainability features, uh or like daylighting, for example. Um also lead over into wellness and comfort level and how people uh work and and enjoy the space as well. Uh one other thing I would say is um HVAC as well, uh high efficiency and uh working with. The the best systems that we can have and and then also using using glazing operable windows and. Uh using that the building to our advantage for sustainability in the mechanical systems.
Uh thank you very much.
Thanks, and so operable windows was one of my questions, and you just mentioned that it's, it was hard to tell from the design what sort of operable windows there are in. Which ones we might consider them?
I think we still need to look at those, Joe, in terms of our uh modeling with our engineers, picture that they actually are in the right. Places or, you know, if they work well with the mechanical system that we would pick, so.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, thanks. John Carey?
I've got some that that I think will be a pretty quick. Um it currently in the alley, um as the building exists now, we've got a utility Dropbox. That seems to be pretty popular, that doesn't be part of um the structure. Was that by design or omit?
No, uh the intent there is to have the is to have the same the same Dropbox, um excuse me, Dropbox. Uh be uh in the alley on the um uh on the southwest corner of the building. Um it it is, it is not shown on that city plan, though. You're right.
Yeah, that that's that's good. Um the best parking lot, um are you able to um, you know, that that sort of fourteen space? Thing that I believe is a gravel lot right now. Are we going to be able to pull the cost out of that? Should we need to value engineer anything out?
Just omit that whole the that whole parking area? Just omit that whole, the whole parking area?
Yeah, the the one that's that's not that what I would consider new area, but the one to the west, it's, you know, single like there's 14 spaces there. It appears that's paved and developed and and I guess that's technically part of the project, but 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 maybe not. If we've got money to do it, it'd be great. But if we don't, we could seemingly consider that.
Right, I'll I'll jump in here. We we're not done value engineering this. That'll be one of the things that we do when we start the final phase of of design once the bond passes. And so there'll be a number of things, we've already talked about a few things. We already have a bit of a list of some things that we can do to provide greater value in the project by not, you know, really substantively changing the appeal and the appearance and the benefits of the project. And, you know, that west area, I think we felt as though it was important to have in the project. And if we could afford to improve it to the same level as the rest of the project, that would encourage people to realize that it was part of the city's property and that it was part of the benefit. You know, the the parking area was reduced because of the configuration of the project. And so when we realized that we had that resource over there, we kind of grabbed a hold of it. And we wanted to at least propose to upgrade it at the same level as the rest of the parking.
Certainly, I think I think the addition of downtown parking would be welcome for everyone. But I think at least myself would would like to consider that if we do get into a, you know, downward value engineering. Is there any concern, it looks like there are six entrance doors on the first floor. Is that, is that about right? I'm just concerned, not concerned, but wondering about first floor security and the ability to secure the building should it need be.
Yeah, good question. So the intent is there are quite a few doors shown on the first floor, but they're all exit doors except for the north and south entry double doors that would bring you into that common kind of north, south lobby area. All the other ones are exit only for security purposes.
Good, yeah, good. Just a couple more. The the and I mentioned this when we talked before, and I can't really tell, but in the in the payment area on that main corridor, that north, south corridor, it appears there's a little bit of a alcove there, but it doesn't appear to be where the payment windows are. I'm worried about two people, three being in line to pay their utility bill and be blocking traffic north and south on that. Is that, is that still what it looks like?
The the hallway is is a little bit of a very generous, I believe. Joe, I think that's about eight to 10 feet wide, kind of allowing the idea of queuing a little bit and maybe even seating right by the glass for waiting, so you don't have the stacking that can happen and then block that whole hallway, north and south, basically. So the the hallway is really generous, can allow you to kind of have some kind of areas where you could step off.
Okay. The the final question is, you know, I don't really, if somebody wanted to come, a member of the public wanted to come and visit the city manager, upper, you know, sort of that northwest corner in the second floor, how do they get there? I mean, how do they get through the doors?
So there's, I believe there's two options to go up. You can take the elevator right there at the core, or you could take this a kind of main stair that takes you up upstairs. So there's a north, south hallway as as well upstairs that either take you to the development or on the kind of more administrative part of the building.
Both of those have both of those, unless you, both of those have doors. Wait a minute, I gotta get the right floor.
Yeah, I I believe there was a little bit of a security discussion in terms of doors, allowing people to kind of let people in so people don't wander off on a, you know, they're trying to get to kind of community events that people don't just wander off upstairs without a a little bit of a control point.
Sure, sure. Good, good point there. I I guess it just would be, I I and that'll be for staff that figure out how they're going to get there. You know, might be a deal where you've got to, you know, the city manager's got to come and open the door to let them in. The building official may have to come and let them in. I, you know, I I'm not real good at reading plans, but that's that's just a question that I anyway, God looks great. Building is wonderful.
Just about your last comment, and it is a good one about accessing, getting up to the city manager or city recorder mayor area, you know, there is, so you you take elevator stair up and then you're in the alley and there is a door control point there. So that would really depend how the city wanted to use the space, but that door could be open during office hours. Or or have, like you're saying, have some sort of buzzer or access for the people who are in those offices right behind there.
Okay.
Everybody's behind a closed door. You know, is 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 valuable for security, may not be best for the people that want to come visit Phyllis.
Yeah, there's that's in public buildings, that's something we run into all the time between a number of different building types is that there's this tension between openness and transparency of public agencies and the need for security. And so we've tried to balance that in the design where we have open and transparent for the main public areas. Some obscuring on the main level, main level windows, which is a detail we could get into later. And then when you come in, the finance area is is an open office area and you can see a lot of what's going on, but there is secure glazing there. So we've, we've kind of tried to selectively open the most public areas to be as transparent as possible, yet provide security for staff who work there every day.
And the the planning, the planning area and development area will have a counter that's majority of it's open. Basically, there's a little bit of rolling, what do you call them, an overhead closer that kind of closed it after hours. But that one is going to be a little bit more open to the to people.
Yeah, and just Marty and I think Janet and Phyllis have both kind of popped in. They obviously have talked through that a little bit and.
Yeah, I I can just add that we have had a few conversations and all of what's been said has been said so far where we're trying to balance staff having a a safe place to work where we don't have folks just wandering around and trying to find their way. And at the same time, being approachable and accessible to anyone who wants to find us. And so I think the idea is that, as was said, if the upstairs door doesn't need to be closed all the time or there's a way for access to be available, we can, we can figure out how to do that. But we have talked through, I think, you know, we're trying, we're trying to strike a balance, so. And I appreciate the comment and it's, you know, what the council is saying too, is that your wish is for approachability and to for folks to be able to wayfind, then that's helpful feedback for for us to to look at in this circulation.
And I may, may I add one word just as far as finance and in particular municipal court, we have CEGIS regulations which have been extremely hard to manage in this building. We have, as you know, that swinging gate in the front lobby with counselors walking through, which is, you know, great if you all want to get CEGIS tested and certified. That, you know, we can work with that too, but just to understand that we're, we're trying to put in appropriate security controls based on certification requirements that we have for criminal justice information beyond what the police department has in our building. So that's part of, that is part of what we struggled with, just to back up. You know, we are very much into having openness and and customer friendly spaces, but we have to kind of balance that with being more compliant than we may have been in the past.
And Counselor McKeel, you had comments or questions?
Yes, first, wow, such an exciting building. You can, I just like exciting to think of how Main Street is going to pop this new building. And I thank you for saying there's an elevator because I was thinking that's what the X is, but I'm not used to looking at building plans. So thank you, Richard, for mentioning that. I have just a kind of maybe a silly question, but on the second floor, the reception road two, is that like a glass where somebody's sitting there and they say, can you open the door for me or? So.
I think it's been a planning area, right? I believe, or Larry and then, so so that would be a counter and it's during a office hours that would be just open. And then at night, there's a rolling overhead, a screen that kind of locks it out.
Okay. And then I I do have, thank you for talking about sustainability. And I and I guess, and I'm a new council person, so wasn't involved in this in the beginning. So I'm sorry, kind of getting me up to speed. I see that for obvious expense reasons, it's not a lead building because that would probably make it like to be on a Cadillac. But looking, I love what you said, this is a building for generations. And I've talked to young people who are favor themselves as the, you know, what are you doing for our future? And so you look at these flat roofs and you're wondering if there's solar panels going up there. And I'm assuming not from looking at the list of things. But is the, and forgive me for my lack of knowledge, but are there things in the building that anticipate the technology that we can add in the future that will be cheaper? So when solar panels are something that we can more easily afford, do we have to like rip up the building to get them in?
That's a great question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll ask, I'll get asked that question a lot, which is why I thought I better ask.
You bet. One of the advantages to the design we have, I think was mentioned the orientation of the building. There, just in the way it's oriented with the roof surfaces we have, they are what we call, they're not flat, they're low slope. So we have proper drainage, but they are oriented in such a way. For example, the roof over the city council chamber municipal court space is slopes a little bit to the south and that would be an ideal area along with the area where we have terrace or next to the terrace where we could have PV photovoltaic panels in the future. Also, the main roof over the two-story piece, there's some space up on that roof for PV as well. And we are doing this on some other projects. And on projects that we've done where PV can't go on right away for whatever reasons, there are, there are abilities to rough in for future PV installation. And that's actually something we don't have. I don't believe we've anticipated that in the design right now, and we should add that to our list of things to do when we're able to move forward again with the project. But that's a really great point. It's, it's one of the things that we can do the easiest with a design like this to provide the most amount of benefit.
Yeah, as an example, we we Troy and I work on the Beaverton PD and the whole building, literally every single surface on the roof, canopies is covered in PV, so.
We're in a position that almost anything is going to be more energy efficient than what we have, so. That's one consideration. Cal, I'm going to do a quick process check, so I'd like to try to wrap up by nine if we can. This is a great discussion and I I would like it to continue, but if everybody's getting antsy then. I'm, okay, I'm not seeing any appetite for cutting it off, so we'll continue a little bit longer. Thank you, Counselor Oberst.
So I have a list of short, I think, short questions. So going back to solar panels, are you engineering the roof structure for panels to be dropped on later? The load, is that a calculation that you're going to have to look at and make any structure changes, just saying? You know, putting it on your checklist?
Yep.
Okay, so when the university built Ackerman Hall, which is was the first lead platinum dormitory in North America, they took down an area called The Grove on campus. And there was a local guy who proceeded to take those logs and mill them into stair treads for the stairways, paneling for the walls in the downstairs, et cetera. So a lot of that wood, instead of just being trashed, wound up going into the building. You've got a couple of trees you're going to have to take down where the plaza is going to go. And again, just saying, and we, you might even be able to find that same guy, I think he's still around, has a sort of a mini mill and he might be able to create some nice stuff for the inside of the building. The bike rack, you mentioned a bike rack around back, but I'm wondering about one in front on the plaza, at least a couple of three slots. If that's not in the plan, I'd like to see it. One of the concerns I've had long term over our utility billing arrangement is somebody comes in in a financial crisis and they have to stand there in front of God and everybody and explain their financial crisis to staff and et cetera. Have we thought about a private area to be it for for utility billing staff to be able to sit down with a customer and talk through a payment plan where they're not standing out in the hallway where anybody walking by can hear what's going on? If not, I think that might be a nice addition to the project if there's any way we can work something like that in. Right now, if I'm going to see Marty and I'm not a city councillor, I would walk in the front and I would talk to the people in the utility billing and say I have an appointment with the city manager and that person would call the city manager who would come down and fetch me. And so it's the intent that we will use the utility billing counter as reception effectively for somebody coming for appointments with people upstairs. You know, is that, is that something that you've thought through? And how does Janet feel about that with her staff? Okay. And then the last thing I have, and this is where you gotta just hate when you city councillors come on. When you mentioned your project goals, the first one that struck me was project goal two, right sized. And I believe this building is right sized. I'm concerned about the size of the council chamber and courtroom. How, what's the capacity of that space? In 10 years as mayor, I think I had two council meetings where I had over 10 people. And I know 50 years down the road, Monmouth's twice the size of it, so now we have 20 people. What's the capacity of the council chambers?
Give me one second here. Where, as far as the public in the chamber, as far as if it's in a seating arrangement, we have about 100 people in there. And when we compared the size of this, of the council court space early on in the design, this, this, this seemed to be the the right fit as far as growth versus what the the number of people you're seeing in there now and also comparing it to other And also comparing it to other cities of this size and, and the buildings that they have.
I think we were also looking at the multi-use aspect of the space. And, you know, I'm just thinking back to our own public meetings we had there a year ago now. And we, I think we had about 50 people at the first one. So there's that calculus going on as well, I think, for the, the design team.
I'm just imagining if those tables were out from in front of the DS that you could fit 200 chairs in that space. And when we talk about value engineering, I'm wondering if that might be sort of a big ticket if we really need to make some cuts item to shrink that chamber, just, you know, putting that one out there. The other concern I have about the council chambers frankly is a wall of glass with doors directly to the outside in this political climate. And I'm not, I'm not thrilled with feeling quite as open to the world as I might be sitting there giving, given the, you know, the climate that we have seen around this country and with opinions toward elected officials. So if I were the judge or the prosecutor, I might also have concerns about a glass-walled courtroom. And I wonder if we have talked to the judge and the prosecutor and so on to see if, you know, the police, are they on board with that glass wall? And that's all I've got.
So that's a really good question. Thank you. We have had that discussion several times and I think it was something that didn't come through.
Of my overview, if you will, of the funds. And so we're looking at positives, as you know, actually from your budget committee meeting, for most of the funds at this point, including I actually made mine at green based on, as Counselor Lopez mentioned, for this year is looking very, very good. As in, we will hopefully be seeing the full debt service payment made for the second half of our payments. And as well, because we are going to be refunding. And I know Marty promised that I would tell you about our pricing, but it's actually not happening now till Thursday. So, so I can't tell you yet what, what, how we did. But I hope to be able to tell her for your Friday tidbits how we did. And so we'll be actually having our pre-pricing call tomorrow on that. But I'm still anticipating, based on rates being where they are, that we'll have a savings of over half a million dollars in interest payments. So that's great news on mine. Going back to the general fund, we're seeing, you know, very good property tax turnovers. Our intergovernmental revenues, our state sharing revenues are also on track to meet or exceed what we budgeted. Really, the only one that I'm watching still is fines and forfeitures. But fortunately, it's not a, a big contributor and we don't count on those funds to make or break our, our general fund revenue. Exponentially wise, all of your departments are staying under their appropriation balances and trying to be frugal within, you know, within the constraints that we have as far as providing services that are needed. The only other one that I would mention is our urban renewal fund. And we are working on that, moving some of those projects forward. We're having bi-weekly meetings to try and keep some momentum. And I know that you just saw your urban renewal annual report for last year. And so we're hoping to make that even better for next year. But we are trying to spend down our $4 million bank loan and working hard to, to keep those projects moving forward. Otherwise, I, the only other thing I wanted to talk about is I did add in at the end of the report, some, just a little bit of an overview, as I had promised previously, for where we are with our CRF and our FEMA grants. And you'll see kind of where we ended up spending that money on page, it's 101 of your packets. And I just wanted to give you kind of, in, in the format that we actually have to submit it to the state to give you kind of a high level idea of where we spent it. And so you'll see that really we did a lot to help support the work that, that your employees have been doing to, to try and stay on top of keeping the community safe and ourselves safe. That plus we did do quite a large number of small business grants, roughly 100,000, but as well, we did some support for the 31,000 that you see there has to do with some technological support for the community. And so it really was quite a bit of savings, I will say, because of those grant funds. And so we did use all 405,000 that was allocated to us. But in addition, FEMA, as I've mentioned before, we are looking to 12 to 15,000 more. We hope for that. And there is some possibility of that match being forgiven, if you will. But it's, the, the jury is still out, I gather. There's some interpretation from FEMA that, in fact, we can't use that match clause before January 21st, which unfortunately doesn't help us because we spent the 405,000 before January 21st. So, so I may not be able to do much shuffling of costs there, but will, the jury is out still, as I say. So I think with that, I would take questions if anyone has any. Everybody wants to go?
John Kerry, thank you.
Well, actually, I'm going to punt because I have several questions, but I think they're, they're, I don't, it's just my own ignorance, I will email those to you, Janet. And then you can decide whether or not. And then you can decide whether or not they're worthy of circulation to others. But I think they're pretty simple stuff, but rather than take the time to go through it, I'll email them next day or so.
Okay, sounds good, John. Thanks.
Yes, Councillor Salina Salaberes.
I just wanted, I just wanted to comment. John, thank you. That's what I did beforehand. Carol and I had questions and did a wonderful job answering them. And so Janet, if you feel that, you know, they need to be shared, you're more than welcome to do that, too.
Thank you. Yes, well, no, you guys had some great questions about WIPEG. And I think that, I think generally we've had some discussion about WIPEG, you know, with the more experienced councillors. And I think Counselor Oberst is probably familiar with WIPEG from his previous life. So I don't think there's anything there that would be edifying for the rest. But I appreciated your questions because they, you know, for somebody coming in, they don't necessarily know, yes.
I intended to get them to you ahead of time, but I was negligent. I learned from my elected essentials, Rebecca. I learned.
Mr. Oberst.
Janet, is WIPEG still garnering PEG fees from mineup now that they have switched to the streaming version of video? It's not cable in the traditional sense of the word and-
Correct. No, so it's down to very, very little. They, in fact, I have not seen a turnover since they did the switch to Easy, whatever it's called, Easy Linker. So, but it had dwindled down to next to nothing anyway. There is some chance that we can, I think, and I've looked Elaine for this, but we're still working on charter, having given us PEG fees back for prior years when they were, when they did have cable and we're supposedly collecting it. But I think we basically have our balance and that's what we have to spend.
Thank you.
Which is significant, and we are starting to spend it. But there's plenty there to replace equipment into the, into the next few generations of technology, fortunately.
And actually, I do want to announce that Independence paid its $6,000 this year, so towards operations. So yes, that was, that was a nice to receive item.
I spent several years battling that battle.
And Councillor McKeel.
So mine's just really quick. I know all of the council members have been here before, have seen this budget report. But oh my gosh, Janet, I've served on a lot of boards and I've never seen it for like different visual learners. So thank you, the bar graph, and I said it in email, I just wanted to say this in the meeting. So I so appreciate, it's all extra effort and I really appreciate that. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I actually am always looking for feedback. If you have other ideas of things you want to see, I'm willing to make this a living document. And I did a lot of work on it, you know, a couple of years ago. And I've been kind of trying to give it new life from time to time. So I appreciate any comments or ideas you have.
All right, at this time, I will ask if there are any council comments or announcements before we adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I would like to state that your mayor's notes this month were a perfect opening foray into City Hall finance for voters. And keep at it, you know. A description of the conditions or reference to Larry's video, if we can wind up putting that on, would be, I think, a real selling point to the voters if they can see what we saw when Larry toured the building. Holy mackerel.
Thank you. And Councillor Beltz.
More of a question. I met with a gentleman who's new to Monmouth. He works in Independence. And he was attending a meeting I was attending. And he asked me about, I mentioned the mayor's notes, and I said, it comes in your utility bill. And he said, oh, well, my utility bill is paid for by another organization. He goes, how can I get it? So how does somebody get the mayor's notes if they don't get a utility bill?
It's on our website.
So I should just send him to the website and he can see it from there?
Mm-hmm.
Outstanding. Thank you.
He can also be put on an email list, but that would go through Melissa.
Okay, well, I will give him the opportunity to do any and either. Thank you.
Yes. Now the pressure's on. Start increasing my distribution. All right. Any other comments or announcements? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
We don't need a second, so I will ask all in favor, please signify by saying aye.